All right, good evening everyone. I'm Tim Skogans, Chair of the Bennington, uh, Shasbury Select Board. And we've called a special meeting tonight here on Monday, July 25th. I'm calling a meeting to order now and I'm gonna go through our standard agenda here and then we're gonna just kinda open things up for question and answer and comments. The agenda only has public comments at the beginning on the agenda, but I want you to know that if you wanna make comments at the beginning, you can. If you wanna ask questions during the meeting, you can. And if you wanna make comments at the end, those are also welcome. As is our habit, does any member of the Select Board have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
No.
Nope? Does anyone have any announcements?
No.
Nope? We are here because at State Order, we tested the one monitoring well at the Shasbury landfill for the suspected carcinogen PFOA. And as you all know, since you're here, it was detected. It was detected in very low levels. And we're here to talk about what that means and what the implications are for you and what the implications are for expansion of the program to look at how it might or might not be affecting the wells around the landfill. And I hope to try and get some context for this whole thing. So before we get into the meat of it, does anyone, any members of the public have comments that they wanna make at this point? Nope? Okay. Then we'll move on into the discussion. With us tonight, we have Chuck Schwer.
Perfect.
And you can maybe tell us who you are exactly.
Sure. I am Chuck Schwer. I'm the Division Director of our Waste Management Prevention Division in Mount Pillar. I've been very engaged in the work that we've done in North Bennington, Bennington and Powell. So although this was relatively new to us back in February when we found the first detacs in the North Bennington area, we've certainly done a lot of work over the last few months to learn more about these compounds, to try to understand them a little bit better and to be here for you all who may or may not be affected by this. We certainly take it very seriously since we discovered the problem in North Bennington, which is why we asked for the sampling to be done. We're hoping this isn't gonna be anything near what we found near the ChemFab plant. The fact that we found it is concerning and that's why we're here, 'cause we do care about your health and we wanna make sure you're protected. But we're really hoping due to the very low concentration that we found in the one monitoring well and our understanding maybe of how this could be distributed in the environment, we're hoping it's very limited in terms of scope. But we'll be honest, we're not 100% certain. That's why we're doing the testing. We've been fooled a few times in the North Bennington, Bennington area where it's like, "No, we looked at this compound. We believe it travels this way. I'd be surprised if it's there." And then we find it. So I'm not trying to alarm you. We're hoping that this area, we don't find it, but that's why we're here. We're working with the town to do the testing. We hope to have the testing turned around as quickly as possible so we'll know, is it a problem with the drinking water or not? Because that's the real issue. The fact that it's in groundwater, we're not happy about, but we really don't want it in any of your drinking water. And so that's why we're here. Casey works with me. She's been working on the monitoring the landfill from our solid waste program, 'cause we knew, know there were some other contaminants in the landfill just from the use of the landfill. And she's been the lead on this step. And if it's okay, we can just walk through briefly.
Yeah, let's talk about, make sure all the public is aware of everyone who's here. We have two officials from the Bennington Health Department. Could you all introduce yourselves?
Hi, everybody. I'm Kathy and I'm the District Director of the Department of Health in Bennington.
I'm Shannon Tatro. I'm the Nursing Supervisor for the Department of Health.
Oh, sorry.
Can you do your name?
Shannon Tatro. And I said in Bennington, but Bennington County is more specific, so our area doesn't include Shasbury.
And our State Representative Alice Miller is here. And I don't believe I'm missing anybody else. So yeah, why don't you jump right into it?
Okay. Yeah. So like Chuck said, my name's Casey Caffin. If you're within the quarter mile radius that we've set for continued expanded sampling, you've hopefully gotten a phone call from me. If not, I want your phone number before you leave tonight, 'cause I haven't been able to find it. I'm in the solid waste program and so I've been dealing with the town for the post-closure management of the closed landfill. And so the landfill opened in 1967 and stopped accepting waste in 2005 and closed in 2006. So that's probably in a lot of your memories. You remember taking stuff to the dump. As part of our management of closed landfills, we do sample them regularly, twice a year for metals and organic compounds, volatile organic compounds, which are, you know, the benzines, things you might be more familiar with or have been more familiar with than PFOA. The contamination at this landfill has been minimal. There's been a little bit of iron manganese detected at these monitoring wells, but none of those volatile organic compounds have shown up in like the last 10 year period. So we did the sampling for PFOA as a preventative just because of the proximity to North Bennington and the fact the landfill was open during the period that a lot of these activities were going on. We have four monitoring wells located down in this location adjacent to Airport Road. So they're about 400 feet from the edge of the landfill. We sampled one just to kinda get a presence or absence of whether PFOA was there and we have the 25 parts per trillion detection. Because of that, we're extending out a quarter mile. So that includes section of North Road, Airport Road, Bayhand Road, Donald Green Road, Ready Road, Reading Road?
Ready Road.
Ready Road. All right. And a little bit off of Grove Road down the bottom, a few properties in that location. I've been trying to make calls to reach out to all of you. Like I said, the sampling will be scheduled by the consultant who will be doing the sampling hopefully within the next week, following week. They'll be able to set that scheduling up and you'll be hearing from them. And I think that's all the info I have right now.
Who's paying for this?
The town of Shasbury is the responsible party for the landfill. We'll be paying for it at this time.
Why are we responsible?
Because you were the owners and operators of the landfill.
We were, everything went in that landfill according to the state regulations.
That is hopefully true.
So the state's got a lot more money than we have, last I know.
Yeah, I mean, it's something that you should have the dialogue with the state. We're here really representing the program that monitors and cleans up. I think the funding type questions probably are above us. But it is very clear according to the law, as the owner and operator of the landfill, you are responsible. Now, that doesn't mean that if you were to find an industry that put the waste there that led to the contamination, so that you couldn't then bring them in to help pay for that as well. But at this point, that's so preliminary, you know, you have one detect of very low concentration.
Okay, let me, let me ask you this. Could your test, as I understand it, the baseline that would make it legal or illegal is 20 parts per trillion?
Correct.
And we gave up with 22 and 25?
Is that true?
25 of the new kit out of that same one.
Okay, could your test be off that far?
There's certainly variability. You can have both variability from the test itself as well as seasonal variability. So if we had a lot more rain over the weekend, you could go. And when you're talking a part per trillion, it's possible that you'd be below that.
Okay, now, well, the other thing I understand from what I've read is that Saint Gobain or the company there that used a lot of this stuff is suing the state of Vermont because our standard is way lower than anybody else in the country?
Correct. Our standard is the lowest in the nation. Before we got sued, the Environmental Protection Agency, our federal government, had set a standard of 400.
Right.
But they have recently come out with a revised health advisory at 70 parts per trillion.
So that still puts us three and a half times lower.
That's correct. We think we're right. We relied on our Department of Health toxicologists and we believe that their methodology and assumptions are when it were sound. So we believe will prevail in any lawsuit against us. But that doesn't really answer the question of liability. I mean, the town is still the owner and operator of that landfill.
Yeah, right. But I would still go back to the fact that what went in that landfill was according to every regulation the state had. So I would think, in my mind, that would make the state liable, not make, not us.
And I think you should have those discussions, just not with Casey and I. We can't.
Right. Well, no, but I mean, it just.
No, I'm not a lawyer.
Thank God.
I would say that it's probably important to try and keep these kinds of numbers in some context. And there's a couple of numbers there that I think help put it in context. Is the Vermont standard for safe drinking water of this chemical, PFOA, is 20 parts per trillion, which is a tiny amount. I've never heard of any other chemical pollutants talked about in parts per trillion before. Usually it's parts per million or parts per billion. We're talking parts per trillion. The federal number is 70 parts per trillion. And what we found at the landfill was, we took two samples of the same well. One came back 25 and one came back 22. So the numbers are just about as low as they could be for the landfill. And the other thing to keep in mind is that this chemical is really pervasive in the environment. It is everywhere. I was reading online that polar bears in the Arctic have PFOA in their blood. It's been used in so many industrial processes for so long, it really is, it is just about everywhere and you can get it in other places than, other than your drinking water. It ends up in food and other things also. Questions?
I have two questions. What mechanism does any dump in the state or any state have to figure out what someone's bringing to the dump? And how, why is it that the town assumes responsibility when they have no mechanism to check what's dumped at the dump? And how can, how can the state say that we're responsible? Somebody brought the material to the dump and dumped it.
Well, so that's, that's certainly a possibility, but we also know that there's a lot of products in our environment, household products. That Stainmaster Carpet Guard is containing PFOA. So at these low, low concentrations, I'm not so sure you can say that. I think with the ChemFab plant, we have extremely high levels there that make it, I think, more obvious that there's an industrial source.
But if every dump is checked, like by what you're saying with Scotch Guard and these other products, so whatever percentage it is in the ground, it would show up in some way in other, in other landfills that are nowhere near anywhere where something was dumped. So has that ever shown up in other dumps?
We're starting to look at other landfills and we've seen some tests from some landfills come back non-detected. We haven't looked at enough to say conclusively. And today, you can't operate a landfill without the checks you're talking about. But back in the old days, before environmental issues were a concern, you're right, they weren't necessarily monitored as closely.
What mechanism, what mechanism's in place right now if I bring something dangerous to the dump?
Well, they have.
Would somebody check what I brought in?
Well, if you're going to a dump, you actually have to go through the gatehouse. You have to go to the weighing station and there are people watching your loads that are dumped. So that's part of the ongoing management. And the only operating landfill in the state's privately owned now. They don't want contamination that's banned from landfills to be in there, 'cause they could be held liable, which is kinda what we're talking about here. As the owner and operator of a landfill, you are responsible for what's being put in there, fair or not. That is the law. So back in the day, it was, you know, not necessarily that way. So people weren't paying attention. But today, people are paying attention. You have to be.
Am I right in assuming that the only one I've heard of, other than Bennington landfill, areas around where the factories were? Shasbury's the only state, or only landfill in the state that's found it?
That we've found so far. How many Bennington landfills? Yes.
Yeah, Bennington, but they had, they had a plant up there.
We looked, we did some testing around. There was a alleged former dump in the Powell area, 'cause we were worried about what was going on there. And we did not, we had some monitoring wells. We did not find any there.
Well, they had, there's PFOA down there.
Correct. But you asked me about the landfill around one of the former old dumps.
Right.
But we've, as I mentioned, we don't have a lot of results yet on landfills. And it may turn out you're right. It may be that every landfill has it. We hope that's not the case.
No, we're not kidding at it. The percentage would be dramatically lower if it was from Scotch Guard and Kevlar or whatever else that they impregnated with, as compared to dumping barrels or tons or dump trucks.
Completely agree with you. Any other questions?
Well, the bottom line is regardless, you know, how low the number is, how many parts per trillion, 22, 25, it's still above the state advisory level, which is 20. It's really expensive, extremely costly.
That's what you guys should explain to the town, is what this is gonna cost for every poet piece that's gonna go into every house and the maintenance to maintain.
We don't know the extent of it yet. And you don't know about, you know, whether it's an aquifer, how it's dispersed. And there's a lot that you're still learning about PFOA. But expenses can be prohibitive. I mean, look at the costs to North Bennington. And how come we're the only, I mean, like, Powell, we own a property in Powell. But fortunately, a responsible party stepped forward because our rental property was in District Two. It's, it was a fortune to supply bottled water. It's been going on for weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks and to pay for all the tests. The tests are $250 a pop.
And to install a filtering system in every home that's affected.
Look at the cost to North Bennington.
Thousands of dollars.
This town can't afford that. You know, there needs to be like some kind of state funding available to help with the cost of this or federal funding available. This town can't handle the costs if it proves to be more extensive than it is right now.
And I think you bring up a great point. As I mentioned earlier, that's something, you have your representative here. I think that's a very legitimate point that you should raise and bring that to the state's attention. I think the important thing for those not as familiar with you with the PFOA is that we wanna make sure it's not in your well. So that's really why we're here. We wanted you to know about the bottled water, the testing and our plan. I think your discussions are important if we do find it's there and it's widespread. And let's hope it's not there and it's widespread.
So Chuck, what's the turnaround time of the test?
We're hoping to get the consultants out here sampling within two weeks. The lab says it's a three week turnaround. The results that we got from Shasbury came back within a week and a half. So they guarantee three weeks. The longest we're looking at then is five to six weeks. Hopefully it's shorter.
So the next step, if you find it in more wells, is testing the PFOA?
Not necessarily. Shannon, I don't know if you wanna talk about it. You're talking blood testing?
Yeah.
So hopefully the blood levels or the well testing will come back as low, if not hopefully lower even non-detected. But the level of the, we would not, it may not be appropriate to do blood testing because it depends on the levels found in the wells. Because every American has PFOA levels in their blood that range from 2.1, 2.7 to 5.1 micrograms per liter. If we tested everybody in here without any kind of exposure risk, they would all fall in that normal range. That's how it's in polar bears, it's in seals. It's, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's the product of our manufacturing years. So, so if these blood, if these wells come in at that level number, the blood equivalent would be the same. It would fall into that normal range. We would not be able to tell if your level was due to contamination or due to just normal everyday exposure. So it all, so this is a preliminary question. We would have to see what the results of the wells come in at. If they come in very significantly higher, then we would then, you know, obviously, it's, it's a conversation to, it's a both.
What concerns me is this could, this could be like a snowball. You found what you found out, then you find it and say, a quarter mile, then you go to expand it to a half a mile. And then you're gonna, every, I don't know, somebody with, you gotta do it again. And you keep doing it, doing it, doing it. So the town of Shasbury don't address any water. You can't afford it.
What do you want us to do?
Put our heads in the sand and forget?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just, I'm just.
And let's test the wells and find out.
Fine. I wanna find out. And I don't want anybody to panic. But I don't think that it should be the town of Shasbury's fault. When we did everything legal with the landfill, the state's got a hell of a lot more money than we do.
Okay. We're the Eastmans and we live right next to the landfill.
Yep.
Okay? We've been asking for that landfill. We'll purchase the property. The landfill was due to close within five years. That was in 1979. Then they reapplied for certification and they got it. Meanwhile, all these barrels, and we have pictures of the barrels, from we're not sure where. It could've been Stanley Tools, could've been anywhere, all stood next to our property line for years and years. And the town dragged their feet to get those barrels removed.
So they're liable.
So they're liable.
But again, let's test the wells and find out before, anybody here?
Hold on. I'm just trying to look down the road. The state's saying we're responsible. And the state, like I said, the state's got a hell of a lot more money than we do. And the best of my knowledge, and I've worked on that landfill a lot of times, and the best of my knowledge, nothing went in there. Maybe the most of it come out of Stanley Tools.
Well, we'll get you a copy of the pictures of the one of those barrels and you can just see. Use them right out into the ground.
If I could, could offer that, the people we have at the state here tonight are environmental and health people. And the question of who pays is a question that still needs to be addressed. The state has been very aggressive in searching out this chemical to find out about it since it became such a problem in Housick Falls. And their approach to that has been, when they found it first in high concentrations in Bennington and North Bennington, they found that it was coming from a chemical plant. And their, their strategy was to find the responsible party and ask them to pay for it. And so far, that has been largely working, that down there, Saint Gobain has been very cooperative, as they were in Housick Falls. At this, as they expand it to see how big a problem it is statewide, they're keeping that same approach, same approach. Identify the responsible party. Now, at this point, the responsible party, as far as we know, is Shasbury. Whether or not we're gonna have to pay the long-term costs and what those long-term costs are going to be, we don't know yet. But what our immediate concern is and what I'm sure your immediate concerns are, what are the health problems and how worried should residents around there be at numbers like 25 and 22? And that's what we're trying to put in context tonight here. So I think rather than get too bogged down yet about who's gonna pay, 'cause I think that that's still negotiable, we should try to talk about what your concerns are about your water and how you should react to these kinds of numbers and what you can expect to happen in the next few weeks. Do we have any other questions from the public of a personal water and health nature? Yes, ma'am?
Well, I just had a question. And Casey, thanks for calling me the other day. I'm Claudia Madison. I live on the end of Bay and Grove, Grove Road. And it can get complicated, Mr. Harrington, and it is scary. I grew up in Housick Falls for most of my life, was away from Housick Falls area in, into Bennington for approximately seven years when I went to college and started working in the hospital. And then I've been sitting on Grove Road for the last 30 years, happier than I've ever been. Shasbury's a wonderful place. But I wonder what long-term exposure can cause. I've had health problems. Are they just something that God has given to me or would they have been caused from the PFOA? I don't know. But I don't wanna put my head in the sand and not say that it's.
Hold on. I'm gonna say, I mean, as far as I go, my diarrhea is from here to down the hatch from that factory in Housick. And it's, yeah, my thing is, you know, to be safe about it, to know about it and don't panic, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
But we've gotta, we've, we've gotta know what to expect. Now, I understand somebody will be calling. Will they test the well itself or will they come in and get tap water? Or how is that?
Yeah, they need to come into the house and, and collect it from the tap. They'll wanna look to make sure you don't have like a water softener or something like that.
And if you do, 'cause we, we have high iron where we are and we had to get a softener.
Yeah, I believe they're gonna wanna sample it before the softener. But that's something the samplers are familiar with, the proper protocol. But you'll want, you'll wanna be there. And Casey hopefully can be part of that too, so she can help answer questions while the consultant collects a sample. And we've had quite a bit of experience down in Bennington, North Bennington, where we're upwards of about 500, almost 500 homes that have been sampled. So, you know, we understand the concern. And I, and I'm hoping that this isn't gonna turn out to be anything like that. In Bennington, North Bennington and in Powell, we had factories that used this chemical and released it in, in the air and potentially spilled it on the ground. Whereas we don't necessarily have this. Maybe some waste was deposited in the landfill. We've heard it shouldn't have been a lot. Maybe it was, but we've not heard reports that at least the ChemFab waste went here in any large quantities. If people know of information like that, I think maybe your pictures, if you could share with us, that could help.
And the town was aware of those barrels being there. I just want the town's select manager for time. I don't think we have town manager for time. No. They all knew those barrels were there. And those barrels were there for years before they were removed.
And this was in the 70s?
We moved in in 79 and they were there probably till 1985 maybe.
Any idea where they were from, Sally?
No. We got pictures from our property line, but that's when anybody and anyone could've gone into that landfill and dumped stuff. It could be Stanley Tools, could've been Daley's stuff, it could've been.
It could've come from Kev.
Could've come from Kev. And, you know, I don't remember how many barrels they are. I haven't looked at the pictures in a few years, but there may be 10 or so in that particular picture.
So I understand it's a potential carcinogen. Are there any health issues that are known to result from exposure?
So studies have shown correlations, but not a cause and effect relationship.
Just speak up a little bit, please.
Studies have shown correlations, but not a cause and effect relationship. Really, there is no information out there now that says if you're exposed to PFOA, you will have high cholesterol. However, so some of the things that have been shown to be correlated with PFOA exposure are high blood pressure, decreased birth weight, some immune effects, thyroid disease, kidney cancer and testicular cancer. So the important part that I want you to hear in that is there's no cause and effect relationship known right now. So if you are concerned, that is a conversation I suggest you have with your healthcare provider. Right now, it's just case by case on an individual level. There's no large broad group of knowledge that can really inform us about. These are the health effects of PFOA.
And if we can follow on that, I know it's kinda confusing to get into numbers, but I've been trying to get a handle on this, 'cause it's hard to, to know how to react to, to numbers of a certain size. And the other thing is that the units of the numbers change sometimes, 'cause when we talk about water, we talk about parts per trillion. When we talk about blood, we, we have a different number. And you were saying the number that we talk about in the blood is.
2.1 to 5.7.
Say that again?
2.1 to 5.7 micrograms per liter is what the normal average range that everyone has in their blood just from normal environmental exposures.
Micrograms per liter. Would be parts per billion.
Right.
Parts per billion. So you have more in your blood than what?
So that's a thousand times more than a trillion, right?
Right.
At what level, at blood levels, do they expect that you're gonna get some bit of illness from this? They don't know.
Well, I can, I think if we're talking, if we use, try to use the same numbers, .5 to 5 is what everybody has in their blood.
2.1 to 5.7 is the quote-unquote normal range that any one of us who's living in a normal life in our industrialized society would have in their blood.
Right. And we're gonna, sorry to interrupt. We're gonna get blood data from the Bennington, North Bennington clinics that they did? How many samples did you guys take?
How many samples did you guys take?
462, hang on, I have it written down. 462.
Sorry to interrupt. That may help us understand the blood numbers better, too.
462. That's the wells. We tested 462 wells. I don't have it written down, but it was in the low 400s.
Okay, but I, I, I guess I was, what I was looking for is if, when you say, you know, that, uh, there's been associations, and they're even small, with PFOA and these certain diseases and cancers, uh, the blood numbers that are associated with those are thousands of times larger, right, than this average that we're talking about here? So just, you know, if it comes to that, you know, and you end up having your blood tested, um, you know, average is gonna be a number that comes back 2 to 5, something like that. Uh, the numbers that have been shown in tests, that are in studies to cause cancers are thousands of times that. So it kinda gives you an idea of, you know, where your panic level is, if you wanna think of it that way.
Also, I think it's helpful to know that if you limit your exposure to PFOA, it goes down by half every two to four years in your blood. Whatever your level is, if you limit your exposure, the level in your blood goes down by half every two to four years. So if you stop drinking contaminated water, that level will go down by half every two to four years. And if it was, so the example that I've heard used before, that if you have high cholesterol caused by PFOA, and you limit your exposure, there is a chance that you will no longer have high cholesterol after it goes through the half-lives, and it's no longer in your blood to such high levels. So the important message, I think, in that is that your exposure...
But how do you break down that you've got high cholesterol and PFOA, or are you just cutting the eggs every day?
Right, you don't know.
Or you're genetic.
Right.
Like, genetic, diet, or...
Is there any proven cases of illnesses caused by certain levels of PFOA?
Correlation, but not cause and effect. So there's no information out there that says, yes, PFOA causes these health effects.
I know it's a little confusing when we, we can't say, you know, exactly that, you know, this level of exposure causes, uh, this level of disease. But the kinds of studies that tell you that take years, sometimes decades, to, to get a handle on it. And what we're looking at here is, uh, an environmental department at the state that's, you know, and, and at federal government, that's saying, you know, we're getting evidence that these things are bad, and we're taking steps now to try and control them. Uh, but we don't have all the science in it, so you're gonna get some disagreement on, you know, whether 20 is a good number, or 70 is a good number. Uh, but the important thing, I think, is that if you get your exposure down, it comes out of your blood. And that's really the, the only treatment for it, or the best thing to do in terms of... And so what Kathy was saying, if we do find it in people's wells, then that's the next thing we have to address, whether it's a carbon treatment system, bottled water. But stopping that exposure, you're limiting any additional PFOA that you may get, uh, other than just living in our society with Gore-Tex coats, with Teflon pans, with Stain Guard Scotch Guard products, so...
So if you live outside that quarter-mile radius, um, in order to get your water tested, you have to pay yourself out of pocket, which could be $200 to $300, I was told.
That, that's correct, and, and we're hoping that we're being conservative, that a quarter mile, just based on the very limited sample results in one monitoring well, and the fact that it's not a factory that spewed it out of the air necessarily, that, you know, maybe some waste went there, that hopefully a quarter mile, we don't see the problem. But if we do, and we have to expand, then we will make sure it gets done. So I think...
Meanwhile, you just wait, and don't drink your water, and...
If you're concerned about it, don't drink your water, for sure. I understand that. It's a tough thing, but we have to sort of take it logically, and, you know, we're hoping, Kay, Kay, Casey and I are hoping that really a quarter mile is more than enough. But that's why we're doing it, to make sure.
What, what if you were, and we found maybe a tenth of a mile out? Would you then cancel the rest of the tests, or...
I think we'd like to, we'd like to have this full quarter mile...
Well, anyway, but I guess I said that wrong. You do your quarter mile, and then after your tests come back, it only, it's only out a tenth of a mile or less, or maybe just the wells we've already tested. And you just, everything stops, or...
Yeah, I would think we would, yeah, I think we would be comfortable that it hasn't expanded beyond the landfill footprint. But on the converse, if we see it in a certain area, or maybe it's being carried by groundwater flow, then we may wanna expand in that, in that direction.
Expand it, in that direction, that, back the other way.
Correct.
And what'd you say, Dave? We have $17,000 invested in this, and we'll have?
Uh, for this initial phase, probably somewhere between 10 and 15, depending on the final point we're getting paid at this week.
Other comments about, uh, health effects or questions?
You say we have four wells, and you've tested one. Why haven't you tested the other three?
The other three we will be testing in this expanded analysis that we're doing. Um, we initially just went with one to see if it was there, if it wasn't, because we, we have not had many landfills sampled at this point to know whether this was a cause for concern or not, so we...
Are the wells, the four wells, close to each other?
They are all in a line, right down in this location.
They're all right down there?
Yes, they are.
Now, you have tested wells in the past, I've heard, where the amount of contaminant fluctuates. Goes up, goes down. Are you gonna retest the well you've already tested to see if there's been a change in the number you first got?
Um, I, I think that would be good.
And when do you plan to do that?
That's, that's the next phase, so let us get through this next quarter mile and see what we find. Because depending on what we find, we may be more frequent if we find a lot, or less frequent if we don't find anything. So we haven't made that decision yet.
Right, now, what if you test it again, it's, it's below 20? Is everything off the table then?
No, because we're, we wanna make sure it's not in drinking water. For all these folks who have wells in that area, we wanna make sure their wells are clean.
And you'll find that out by testing all the, the 17 wells you've identified in that one quarter mile.
I think it's a little more than that, but...
We're at about 26 wells at this point.
26 in Shasbury?
Within this quarter mile.
That you've identified, within that quarter mile, on the road you mentioned here.
So we wanna get that work done, and then take a look at the results. And from there, we decide.
All right. So let's, let's just hypothetically say those wells are okay. Why then would the landfill not be okay, and those wells be okay?
It all depends, again, on how much was put in the ground, and what it's doing in the environment. So is it all, is it a really low concentration that's all contained? And through, you know, normal movement, it gets less and less to the point it's not detected? Or was there a large amount placed in the landfill at some point that's now traveled way out there? And that's the reason we're looking. Those two scenarios all, you know, either one is plausible.
Is this contaminated airborne?
Can be. Like, when they were...
So, why, why?
It was, it's airborne when it's being used in the manufacturing process. So they would coat fabric at the chemfab plant with Teflon, and the PFOA was used as an emulsifier to spread the Teflon out, and then they would bake it onto the fabric. So in that process, that's where it gets, it's airborne. Whereas we wouldn't expect at the landfill there to be any airborne source. You know, it could be if they took a lot of the waste and just dumped it on the ground, and then the wind would pick it up and move it. That's one possibility. But our understanding of the Shasbury landfill is that they put waste and would cover it up. You know, they used a lot of cover material.
Well, just back to, and then I'll stop, back to the responsibility question. If, we've had a lot of people in Shasbury, probably, my neighbor for one, who worked at Kemphett. And I wonder if we should try to find out if workers at Kemphett deposited materials from Kemphett in our, in our, in our landfill?
That would be good, and we will certainly look at that. Anyone who asks...
Do you please look at that?
Yeah. And we've already, we've done a lot of interviewing for the other site. Our enforcement division has done those interviews to try to find out, you know, where waste went. So we already have a lot of that, and I'm not sure we've heard it came to Shasbury. But we will make sure, we'll double-check on that. And certainly, anyone in this room, if you have historical information that you can share with us either now or at another time, we appreciate it.
They also didn't always bury it. They burned it. Because we had, we called the fire department because of the ambulances that were landing on our roof, so...
Again, so, there you have it.
Have you identified any, are there any other towns who are gonna be held responsible for the contaminant in their waters? In their waters? Are we the only town so far who's being held responsible?
Boy, you're not the only town that's responsible for your own landfill. I mean, Shasbury's been held responsible...
Is Bennington being held responsible for its landfill being contaminated?
There, yes.
They are.
I mean, along with other responsible parties. Because as I said earlier, if you identify an industry that brought the waste there, then they're also, according to our law, a responsible party. But we have numerous, um, closed town landfills that we require sampling, that they are doing the sampling.
As I understand it, you said Shasbury is the only town that doesn't have a factory that's being held responsible for it?
Well, relative to PFOA, we have other municipal-owned landfills that are doing what you guys have done, testing for VOCs, testing for metals.
No, I didn't say that, but that's what I meant.
So you were one of the... You were one of the first that we asked to do the PFOA. You, you won't be the last.
Oh, I didn't say that, but I mean, we're the only, at this point, we're the only ones that didn't have a factory that had PFOA, that tested.
You were the first municipally-owned landfill that we've asked for PFOA testing, yes. You had a question over here. Can we get your name, uh, everyone, if you would, state your name, uh, and loudly, so that we can get that for the record?
Now, um, this is a question for health factors. Um, my, my father worked at the BCIC...
Sorry, ma'am?
Allison Young.
Yes.
My father, whom passed away in 92, worked at the BCIC building in North Bennington. Now, with them spraying the fabricators and the Teflon on, and it being, you know, in the air, is that susceptible to them getting and possibly passing on to further generations? No, it's not something to be passed.
Right. For him, yes, but for other generations, no. It's not passed on that way.
Thank you.
I think they'll back to the money, but any medical...
That's one of the questions on the money for a while.
But just, this is important.
Yeah, it is, but we're not...
And so all this medical stuff, who's responsible in the end?
We don't have people here that can answer the money question right now, so let's use the expertise that we have.
Marshall Case, uh, is Howard Park within that, that section you're looking at?
No.
It's not. How close is it? That's had more public use than...
Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not close. Ken, do you have an idea of the distance, mile-wide? But you're talking about Daley's being completely in between Howard Park and there.
Oh, you have the wedding area? It's the same hole, and you have Howard Park, and the kids are there all the time?
Yeah, but the, the quarter-mile radius is, is a good distance from Howard Park. You'd have to cross the entire Daley property.
The way the water table work, it may not be. I'm just suggesting that that's a hotspot it is. And as you look at things widening out, I would guess that's a place you might be pretty careful looking at.
Yeah, I mean, we do have some wells that will be between there, and, and that certainly will be something to think about as we expand if we have to.
Now, we can't tell you that, uh, we have done one test of PFOA at Howard Park on the new well we, we just recently drilled for, um, returning water found to Howard Park, and it came up maybe.
And it is important to note here that this municipal water, the Shasbury's, is...
Yeah, Cheryl Dunn, does it matter the depth of the well? Does it make a difference how deep the well is dug? Or the way the water's running under the ground?
It, it can. I'm not gonna really give you a good answer, but it, it really can, depending on how it got introduced in the environment. And in Bennington, North Bennington, it's crazy, the things we're seeing. We have a cluster of wells where all but one are contaminated, but one right in the middle is clean. And we're still trying to understand why that is.
The depth of the well, probably.
Right? And we don't really know even yet exactly why that one well. But I remember when I shared the results with the woman, she was like, "Well, that can't be, because all my neighbors are contaminated." I'm like, "Be happy it is," but, but, uh, yeah, so absolutely.
Absolutely. What about filtering systems now, like I have a filtering system? Would that make a difference in the water?
If, if it's carbon-based, carbon does effectively remove PFOA.
I think it is.
But the important thing is, you need to routinely change the carbon, which you should be doing anyway.
Yeah, yeah, right.
But, uh, carbon will, like a Brita filter, will work to take out the PFOA.
But so if I don't already have the filter, will I still, will I still get a new one?
It, if you're above the 20 per, per trillion, then we would recommend a, um, it's a more robust system. It's a lot more carbon.
Yeah, but I've got the water system already. Got two filters, water comes through, water opens...
Yeah, so you would be fine.
I'm pretty good. I won't be too sick, and that's good.
Yeah.
That's good. That's what I wanted to know.
More questions?
How come you never, uh...
Get your, get your names for the record, please.
I have a legacy. I live right across from the landfill. How come you never tested for this stuff, or how far down do you test when you test these monitoring wells?
See, I, I'm not sure I understand the question.
How far down do you test it?
Um, I know you test for metal.
Yeah, so...
How far down would be a well?
These monitoring wells are all shallow wells. They're between 15 and 25 feet, these four that are located at the airport boundary.
But I think the question you're asking is about the testing, and they test the water, not in the well, but in whatever system it's coming through. So at the house, they test the pipes or the tap. Am I correct in that?
The one landfill is contaminated, isn't it?
The one monitoring well by the landfill has the PFOA.
Inside the landfill?
It, it's from a sample about 400 feet away.
How about the one inside the landfill where the lottery department ran it?
Uh, the town garage, well, supply?
Is that what it is?
Uh, that one has not been sampled yet. It will be sampled as part of this expanded analysis.
Well, that is contaminated, we don't, but it's not necessarily contaminated with PFOAs. Why the town bought the house to be in it, I believe.
Right. Yeah, but even that well has not shown any contamination in quite a few years.
In recent years. It, you know, closing landfills is successful, and that's why we encourage it to happen in minimizing the contaminants, and that does seem to have worked for that.
And that was 400 feet from the landfill?
Um, that one, this is 400 feet from the landfill. This is a bit closer. I think it's about 250.
You're finding a bad wall?
About, yes, at 400 feet, yeah.
Uh, well, the point is that in recent years, none of the wells that we test around the landfill are showing, uh, contaminants of any significance. Iron and manganese, which is probably coming from the bedrock, right?
Yeah, um, that often is a source for it. It can also be from the landfill. And that's why we do the monitoring twice a year, is to keep track of this and make sure things are decreasing, which they have been at this site.
Are we left out, no?
The...
There's a lot of pond fill more unless the building's done.
Yeah, so the, um, like I said, these monitoring wells are pretty shallow. They're not down in the deep aquifers, so they, they could be tapping into some of those shallower ponds, swamps.
I dug a hole there one time. I didn't strike no one.
Not good.
The point, I'm guessing, of having shallow monitoring wells is the shallow wells would most likely be contaminated, correct?
From landfill contaminants, that is usually where we're seeing it, is up in the water that's moving through the waste man.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a comment. Um, I, I've been watching this very closely for some time now. I get weekly updates, at least, from their department, Environmental Conservation. Very thorough, very good reports. I immediately, uh, send those to Tim Skoggins and other members of the board, or now, Tim and I have agreed that I'll send them to Tim and David, and they will distribute them to the board. But I would recommend to the board that those reports that I send to you, if they involve Shasbury, should be posted around town, posted in the town clerk's office, so people can come and see what the state has to say about what's happening in our area.
I'll, I'll tag on to that just briefly. There is a sign-up... There is a sign-up sheet at the door, if you didn't see it when you came in, with a spot for your email address. Shannon has it there at the end. If you put your email address in, I'll sign you up for those weekly updates, and you'll get them automatically. They come out on Fridays, and we'll keep going until we come to some conclusion, hopefully someday.
The other, the other thing, final thing I'll say is that I came to the meeting that Senator Lady came to at the North Bennington Depot Station, where the offices are, and he promised to help us all. He wasn't quite sure how, but he really promised to help out. He's going to be in town in a few days, and I'm going to reception for him, and I will certainly bring it up with him and see if there's anything that the federal government can do. I don't know at this point, but I think the point's been very well made here, that a small town as ours can't afford the kind of costs that may be incurred from extensive lousy tests, so to speak. So I, we need to pursue that. If we need to pursue it, I'm not sure in what way, but it really needs to be pursued, like writing to people who may have dumped this here, by maybe talking to our town lawyer, by just talking to people who are really in the know about this chemical, how it's, how it's transmitted. Tim knows a great deal about it. It just seems odd to me that somehow the business and industries around and about who produce this chemical aren't responsible for what's happening in this wider area. That just doesn't make sense to me. So let's pursue it and find out just how this happens with people in the know.
Any more questions? Let me just ask, how many of you are here tonight because you got contacted that you're in that quarter-mile circle around the landfill? So that's most everybody. How many of you have chosen to avail yourself of bottled water that's contaminated?
Great, good.
Will you want to tell us what's, what people can expect to happen next?
Yeah, so will, the sampling will be done. You'll be contacted to allow access. And then as soon as we get the results, we'll share them as quickly as we can. If you can let them know when they sample, what's the best way to share that information? If it's email, phone call, mailing, just let us know. But we have been committed to getting results out the day we get them, the next day, as quickly as we can. You know, again, depending on when we receive them. But we know you're all very concerned about it, and we'll make sure we get you that information as quickly as possible.
See another hand in the back? Name, please?
Donna Stone.
I'm sorry?
Donna Stone, sitting at Blue Road. And if my neighbor's well, she's going to have her well tested, and if her, and I was told that I wouldn't have mine. I was too far away. I was out a little mile. In fact, I was talking to Casey on the phone. So if Beth's well is tested and has the high PFOA level, what's the next step for me, living just down the street from her?
We, so it, what we did in North Bennington, Bennington, is we established the first radius, and then we had people actually sign up to, they first originally had some of our earlier public meetings, they, they did a paper sign up, but then we found it was easier if they could sign up online, if that was possible for them, or we would sign it, sign them up online ourselves. So we'll do the same process here. If we find it is widespread and we do need to expand, we'll make it known that if you're within a certain radius, sign up. Or sign up even if you're not sure, and then we'll figure it out.
Yeah, yeah. I am taking addresses and numbers if you're within that close area and you want to be on a notification list.
All right, well? Ah, here we are, yes.
Hi, I'm Christine Worsley. And when you're going to test these wells, people that are working, what are you going to do for them? How are we, you're just coming to their house, you know, if you don't have anybody there?
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll work with the consultants to certainly figure that out and try and get some flexible times around, beginning, end of workday. We'll make something happen.
In the, in the Bennington, North Bennington area, we sampled up to like nine o'clock at night, because we knew people worked. So we'll make sure, you know, we find a time that works for you.
Maybe the people here should leave their telephone numbers or cell phone numbers to 26 households.
I think I've got most people's, and I've been calling you on it, but if I haven't called you, or if you have a number that is better than the one that I use to contact you or leave a message, let me know, and we'll keep that list active.
And if you could just remember, one thing we also found is not everybody gets email, or not everybody is aware, or will, you know, pays attention to this type of thing. If you have a neighbor or somebody that you know that's in the vicinity, if you could have a conversation and encourage them to sign up. We're still, we were still, up until most recently, we still were having people coming forward to the North Bennington area and needing their well tested. So, you know, we try really hard, but if you know of somebody that maybe doesn't, isn't up to date with everything and the current situation, if you could reach out to them and let them know to contact us, we'd be happy to include them.
Yes, and I hope a lot of you have my phone number from that. Share it widely. If you don't have it, want it, I can give it to you now or after. We can get you a pen and jot it down. Is everyone ready for that? It's Casey Capon, and I can reach directly at 522-0561.
The results from the testing will be posted on the website. You want to test it?
That's how, that's how we've done it. We remove the names of the individual, but...
But we'll keep it separate, though, so you know it's in Shrewsbury.
The people who, well, protested will get notified.
Yes, yeah, and they'll get notified before we post it.
Well, if there are no other questions or comments, is there any other business that the board wishes to address? David, do you have anything we need to?
No.
No warrants to sign or anything?
No.
Okay, well, if that's it, then this meeting is adjourned.